Meeting is now streaming live.
Alrighty, Madam Mayor, City Council and City Manager Tungate, the meeting is now streaming live.
Thank you, Betty. This meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order. It is February 15th, 2021, at 7:00 on the news. City Clerk Ed Norris, would you call in?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
She is excused for a medical emergency of a family member.
Councilmember Radner. Councilmember Edgar.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next is, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar, and we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitehead, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a short consent agenda. These are items that are presented without discussion, but as a council member, if you have a change in one of them or discussion, we can separate it out. Regular city council meeting minutes of February 1st, 2021. Park Commission meeting minutes of February 16th, 2020. Licenses new and renewals submitted for February 15th, 2021. Their motion to approve the consent agenda.
Almost.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitehead, and second, was that?
Member Burns is back.
Oh, Councilmember Burns, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We have next recognition of visiting elected officials. We have an Oakland County update from our newly-elected Oakland County Commissioner Yolanda Smith-Charles. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor, and members of council, Clerk Norris, and there's probably others who I've yet to meet, so forgive me if I don't say greetings to you, but I see your names there. So councilmen, councilmembers, it's great to be in front of you, and thank you for indulging me for just a couple of minutes. I wanted to be sure to introduce myself, but certainly thank the voters in Oak Park. Again, as Mayor McClellan mentioned, I'm Yolanda Smith-Charles. I ran last year in 2020 for Oakland County Commissioner, District 17. And I'm happy to say that I share your beautiful city with another Commissioner, Charlie Cavell. And so if you live south of 11 Mile and west of Coolidge in Oak Park, you are in my beloved District 17, and I welcome you to feel free to always reach out and keep me posted. A couple of pieces of updates for most of you. I hit the ground running. I'm a member of two committees at the county level, so that's finance, which I think is always important to be a part of, but also infrastructure and economic development. Because I know down here, southern Oakland County, you know, our roads are used daily, our bridges, and other elements of our civilian life that I want to be able to advocate for and speak to. And so to that point, I volunteered to also sit on the MAC, a couple MAC committees. So that's the Michigan Association of Counties, and I signed up to participate in the Environmental Committee as well as transportation, because those are two of my passions. And so with that, again, I'll put my information in the chat. Actually, I already typed it in. But I wanted to give a brief little COVID update. And some of the data is probably information from late last week, you know, today for some government bodies, is President's Day, and I commend you for charging ahead to get your business done in lieu of that. But we had 78 new cases in Oakland County and one new death as the time of this reporting. I think it's important to note, and I want to encourage all of you elected officials in Oak Park to, you know, be confident in your county. I'm hearing, just like you, about Wayne County and Macomb and some of our other surrounding counties. And I would encourage all of you to go and look at some of the charts and the data that the state of Michigan has up. But Oakland County is one of the only, if not only, counties in the green in terms of certain metrics that are being followed by the CDC and other health organizations. So certainly don't lament over some of that, because I do believe the issue could be very well just a good PR program to get the word out. And so we gave out approximately 34,000 doses of, I should say, we received 34,000 doses, and we were able to administer a little over 32,000. And I know that that seems like a drop in the bucket, because literally there were hundreds of thousands of people who signed up to be in that registration for their round of vaccinations. So certainly keep your executive and his staff informed and engaged. I want to encourage all city elected officials, city managers, whoever you are, be sure to reach out to the commissioners. We have committee meetings. Every other Tuesday, you'll find the Health and Safety Committee, but also reach out to the executive, whose team is really at the ground level for the rollout in the vaccine. And I want to just say quickly that our health department, we think, all they're thinking about is vaccines. I want to say that they're still worried about restaurant safety and tuberculosis and all of those other things that were already going on long before this terrible pandemic. So I definitely don't want to take your time. I plan on making these reports on a quarterly basis, and then, of course, reaching out to you guys behind, you know, offline a little bit to just work and engage. So if I, I saw something in the chat. I just want to be mindful of the meeting and the organization of the meeting, so I won't respond into the chat unless you'd like me to take questions, which I'm happy to do as well.
I see that you put your phone number and your email into the chat for anybody who has questions for your Oakland County Commission. Our, what we'd like you to look into, I guess, are city employees. When do they expect city employees to be getting vaccine? So if you would research that and get back to us, we would be delighted.
I will. And may I ask, Mayor, what is the best way to respond? Via email to you?
You have my cellphone. I am 24/7, so anything that you have, feel free to send.
I will. Thank you, guys, so much, and keep up the good work. I'll be on for a little while longer, too.
Are there any other elected officials here to report?
Oh.
I'm just looking at the list of people here.
Mayor, we have Regina Weiss here tonight.
Wonderful, wonderful. We know her. She can give us a little state update.
Yes, good evening. It's good to see everyone here. I just wanted to stop by to give a few updates about what's going on in Lansing and answer any questions that you all have. First of all, I can't remember from the first time I was on here if I had already had my committee assignment, so I just wanted to let the community know some of the work that I'm going to be focusing in on. I have been, well, actually, let me back up a little bit. For anyone who doesn't know me at all or isn't familiar with me, I am a state rep for the 27th District, which includes the communities, of course, of Oak Park, as well as Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Royal Oak Township, Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, and Hazel Park. And I did get my committee assignments and have begun work on those, so I'm serving on appropriations, handling and improving the budget going forward. And specifically, I'm focusing in on the subcommittees, the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs/Insurance and Finance Services, as well as Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And I am the Minority Vice Chair for the School Aid and Michigan Department of Education Budget Subcommittee. And we did just, the budget did just come out this week, so we have exciting news. The Governor released her recommendations for the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. And there are a lot of good things in there that I'm hoping will stay in there and that we can keep advocating for, including a lot of increased funding to our local communities, which I know we all care about and we desperately need. So I just wanted to let you all know that, that there is, in this recommended budget, a about 1.8% increase in constitutional revenue sharing payments, as well as a 2% one-time statutory revenue sharing increase for this coming fiscal year. Additionally, there's going to be another $5 million put in for first responder recruiting and training grants for local communities. And so there is some funding for local government that is included in this budget. I know we always want to see more, and I really want to hear more, too, from anyone on council, anyone in the community, and some things that they feel could be invested more in into this current budget. But that is a recommendation that's coming in from the Governor. There's also a lot in here, including increases in funding for education programs, for public health initiatives, for economic opportunities. So there's a lot of good stuff in this budget, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to come to, be able to get a lot of these things out in the final rendition of it. And additionally, I wanted to let everyone know, too, if they have any questions or concerns or want to reach out about anything in state government, anything that they need help with. Obviously, unemployment insurance is always one that is top of mind. You can always contact me. My email, and I'll put it in the chat as well, is regina.ice@house.mi.gov. My phone number is 517-373-0478. And so those are the easiest ways to get ahold of me, and my staff is working remotely, so if you do call the office, you will get a voicemail, but leave a message, and someone will follow up with you very quickly. So just wanted to let everyone know about that. And then finally, I am having my first virtual community conversation coming up. It's going to be on Wednesday, February 24th, at 5:00 PM, and it'll be on Facebook Live. And it's going to be, along with me will be State Senator Jeremy Moss and Congressman Andy Levin. So you can stream that on my Facebook page, and I'll put a link to that in the chat as well, as well as Senator Moss's Facebook page, and I'm sure the congressman's, it'll be on there as well. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just put in your homework assignment, if you would. Why, if originally staff members, see, city staff members were considered essential workers, and why was this changed out? So if you would research it and get it back to us, we are very concerned about safely opening, safely for our staff and for our residents.
So they were in the 1B category?
They were in the 1B category.
Yeah, I can look that up and get more information on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Representative Weiss, good evening. So could you talk a little bit more about the state revenue sharing increases? What does that represent in terms of dollars? How much are we going to get a bump from what we didn't get last year? Or how, what does this increase represent?
Yeah, so the 1.8% increase in constitutional revenue sharing is approximately 15.4 million. And then the 2% one-time revenue statutory revenue sharing increase is 9.7 million. In terms of what that breakdown is per community, I'm not sure what Oak Park's share of that would be. I'd have to get more information to find out. That's just the total for the state.
Oh, it is, okay.
No, Oak Park's not giving, getting an additional 20-plus million, I wish.
We deserve it.
Yeah.
Certainly do.
When you divide that up into a lot of communities, it's not much.
It's not much. And, you know, and as you all know, Michigan is the worst state when it comes to revenue sharing. It's actually worse than all the territories, I believe, even. So when you're at the bottom of the very bottom of the barrel, the only direction to go is up.
Right.
Thank you so much. Any questions further for State Rep Weiss? Looks like we're on special recognition presentations. We have Black History Month presentation by the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, and City Councilmember Edgar, are you in charge of this? No. Who do we have? Is it the staff liaison? Crystal?
Good evening. Yes, so I can just give you a quick intro, but we actually have the Vice Chairperson of the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission here to introduce this video. Stephanie Crawford, if you want to come forward. This was kind of her baby, and I'll just let her take it from here.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This year, in observance of Black History Month, the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, we decided to showcase and celebrate African-Americans who are making a difference in the Oak Park community through their community service and hard work and dedication. We chose two individuals who we feel exemplified that service and dedication to the community. The first was Patrick Petit. I'm sure most of you may know him. He is a business owner in Oak Park, and we also chose Juanita Bell, who is a longtime one of the commissioners. And she serves, she in the past has served on a lot of commissions, does a lot of great work. And we highlighted them through, in interview format, we interviewed them about some of their service that they've done with Oak Park and letting the community know a little bit about themselves. So we'd like to present the video, which would feature on the City of Oak Park social media platforms, as well as the website. And I guess we can start video. Hi, my name is Stephanie Crawford, and I am the Vice Chairman for the Oak Park Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. This year, in honor of Black History Month, our commission would like to recognize two individuals who have made contributions to the Oak Park community through their volunteer efforts and commitment to the community. Allow me to introduce you to two individuals who have given their time and talents to make Oak Park a better and stronger community.
My name is Patrick Petit. I'm the owner of Petit's Famous Cheesecakes, which, of course, were located in Oak Park, Michigan. Been living in Oak Park since I was nine years old. I've owned houses out here, as far as residential homes. This is our, my second business in the city of Oak Park. Had a real estate company for 20 years, which was Petit's, Petit Realty. And once the market crashed, we know what happened. I decided to open up a bakery, and now this is my second business, Oak Park, which is Petit's Famous Cheesecakes. We've been in existence going on 11 years. But I think we are a major draw to Oak Park, which we're turning to a destination spot where people are coming. I'm not going to say they're coming from Arizona just to get here, but when they do come from Arizona, they do come see us.
My name is Juanita Bell. My connections with the city of Oak Park is that I've been a member, a resident of Oak Park for 23, no, let me change that, give myself credit, for 33 years.
Wow.
I came to Oak Park because I wanted to be at the heart of creativity. I like that culture, that commerce, and other people that I meet, those that I know, those that I don't know. I like the spirit of the city, and I like the people who live in the city, and I like myself and my husband for choosing Oak Park as our place of residence. I do what I do because it allows me to take a lead role. Many times, I'm a secretary. Many times, I will volunteer at an event. I might be passing out water bottles. I might be passing out flags, or whatever Lori Merrily asks me to do. I'm right there, taking that lead role. I'm able to share my talents and skills with others. Many times, I have to formulate the agenda for different groups that I work with, still allowing me to take that lead role. And by helping, it allows me to improve my skills. Not only do I improve my skills, I have a tendency to learn new skills, and I learn things from others. And Stephanie, it just makes me feel good doing what I do.
I just wanted to let you know, on behalf of the Oak Park Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, we really want to thank you for donating so much of your time and your talents and your service. You have contributed to making Oak Park a better place and a stronger place. So again, thank you for your service and dedication.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And like I tell everybody, you know, stay safe. Do what we got to do, so hopefully everything will get back to normal. If it doesn't get back to normal, this is the norm. Let's just keep pushing forward.
Thank you for inviting me, and have a good day.
That is a beautiful presentation. Congratulations to the two awardees. I know that Patrick Petit and his family had another business that they were opening in West Bloomfield, and they decided to bring the business back to Oak Park and expand. So we are blessed that he made that decision, because he's been on national television and all kinds of different awards for his cheesecake, and it centered in Oak Park. Juanita Bell, when, on Nine Mile Road in 2011, when one of the little places for kids, little places for toddlers, was having an event, and Juanita was there to help and to direct. And she is competent, and she is always there, practically the face of Oak Park at all these events. If you want to get something done, you call Juanita Bell. So thanks to both, and thanks to the Arts and Cultural Commission for recognizing two local gems for Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to, I think, before I open the public hearing, I would love to hear from Director Rob Barrett on the allocation of the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds. This was a pot of money that had been very significant at one time, and has been whittled down to about, would you say, a tenth of what it had been? Director Barrett? Oops, I'm not hearing you. Director Barrett, make sure that you're not muted. Not hearing.
Madam Mayor, if you need me to weigh in.
Yes, please.
Director Barrett, I don't know if you want to, maybe your microphone's not on, or? No? Uh-oh, okay.
Can you hear me now?
There he is, okay.
Sorry for the technical difficulties. Yes, we are receiving a lot less money than we received decades ago, but it's been inching up ever so slowly. It would be awesome if the federal government and HUD could release more funds to Oakland County so we can distribute more, especially to the most neediest in our community.
The need far outweighs the supply.
Absolutely. I can begin this agenda item as, good evening, Mayor and Council and City Manager Tungate. City of Oak Park is expected to receive 128,000 this year in CDPG funds. The funds must be allocated to specific projects with specific dollar amounts identified. One of the conditions of the funds is that we need to hold a public hearing to solicit public comment and how the fund should be allocated. It is recommended City Council make, have a public hearing to receive comments on the allocation of the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds. It is also recommended City Council pass a resolution approving the recommended allocation of funds and authorize the mayor to sign the application and sub-recipient agreement on behalf of the city. The proposed allocation is 98,000 for code enforcement and 30,000 for yard services, which is grass and snow removal. And just as a reminder, we've been through this many times, Mayor, but when we open the public hearing, we can't take any comment from staff or elected officials. It'll be open and shut before we speak.
Is there anything else that you wanted to say before we open the public hearing?
Just no more than what I already said, is that I wish we had a lot more funds here to allocate. We are a community that could use these funds, but we'll make do, and we are using them the best we can.
Can you explain what the 98,000 for code goes to? Like, how does it improve the committee, the community, and a little sales pitch for that?
Yeah, the $98,000 for code enforcement is an important part that directly affects a lot of our neighborhoods that have direct needs that need extra, a lot of code enforcement activities where they're deteriorating, and we can focus these areas by allocating specific time slots for code enforcement to spend in these areas that are most needy. And with that, it also helps the City of Oak Park in whole.
Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing to comments only on the allocation of these Community Development Block Grant Funds, the 98,000 for code and 30,000 for yard service. As I said before, we could use easily 10 times this. There's huge need. But this is what we have. Is there anyone who is in the public who is here, not to make a comment on something else, but about this specifically? Any comment about the public grant fund distribution?
If anyone would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand under participant list or leave a message in the chat.
Anyone here to comment on the block grant allocation?
I'm not seeing any, any hands going up or messages.
Thank you. And we tell our federal representatives, this is a drop in the bucket, and they know that more than we do. So if there's no one else to speak for the public hearing, I will close the public hearing and accept a resolution approving the recommended allocations of the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funds, authorizing the mayor to sign the application and sub-recipient agreement on behalf of the city. Will somebody make that resolution, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Burns, and will someone second? Thank you. Councilmember Whitehead. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, that was Councilmember Radner, just for reference.
Councilmember Radner, thank you.
We look so much alike, she keeps confusing us.
That's true. Young, two young handsome guys. What can I say?
Mayor?
They all look the same. Yeah, what?
I have a question for Director Barrett.
Councilmember Edgar.
So that 98,000 plus is going to really, my understanding from what you said is that it will be focused in certain areas of the city? it will be focused in certain areas of the city that are more problematic?
Correct.
Okay, what areas are those?
Not sure if you want me to publicly state it out, but there's areas south of Nine Mile that have very low income levels that qualifies us to do code enforcement under CDBG regulations, and we'll be focusing in those areas.
So this is, this is HUD, right? I mean, it...
Yes.
Okay, so the money then has to sort of focus on housing?
It doesn't necessarily focus on housing, it focuses on areas of need, and there's a significant list of activities that you can do to allocate your resources, your limited resources to. And historically, and in the past, this has been of a recommendation allocated to code enforcement and senior services. Many years ago, when we had upwards of $200,000, we used it for home improvement projects for the needy, but that's when we're up around significantly a lot more money. And many, many years ago, you know, you can use it for funding for street projects or some road projects in needy neighborhoods.
So that the $30,000 that may go, that will go for our lawn mowing and snow shoveling services for seniors?
Yes.
We were partnering with OSHA in, in Ferndale, correct?
We are partnering with OSHA in the past, and due for a bunch of reasons, and staffing and some of their partnerships, they can no longer directly administer our program for us, so they are pre-qualifying under a separate contract. But with, with that is, we are doing all the administration ourselves.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any further comments? Are you ready to vote? City Clerk Norris, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no communications or special licenses, we are down to item 10, accounting reports. 10A is approval for payment of invoices submitted by Garen Luco Miller, P.C., for legal services in the total amount of $13,956.52. Is there a motion to approve payment to our attorneys? Councilmember Radner?
So moved.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, was that?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call vote, then, please.
Councilmember, Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner? Say yes.
Councilmember Radner? Are we not hearing you? Technical difficulty.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. There are no bids or ordinances, so we are down to City Manager?
Madam Mayor, there's, there's a second.
Oh, sorry, missed, I skipped.
I'm sorry.
I have, I religiously skipped something every council meeting, this might be the one. Approval for payment of an invoice submitted by Howard L. Schiffman, P.C., for legal services retainer for January 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2021. We pay ahead on this in the total amount of $18,000. Is there a motion to approve payment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Radner?
Edgar.
Edgar, thank you. Your voice must sound the same. If there's no discussion or questions, would we roll call vote, please?
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan is out yet?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner? Get back on?
Technical difficulty.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Yes.
And Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried, then, thank you. Now to City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna have Director Van Vleck join me for 14A, but before I do that, I did want to let everyone know, if you haven't received a communication from the city yet, I would be surprised, because we have issued an emergency communication. We are putting in place a snow emergency effective 10:00 a.m. tomorrow until 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday. We are expecting up to nine inches of snow, so obviously that means we'd, we'd like to request that all residents move their vehicles off city streets so we can get through there with our emergency vehicles or snowplows. With that being said, Director Van Vleck, 14A, please.
Good evening again. As I think most of you might, may remember, the Michigan Indigent Defense, or the MIDC, was created by legislation in 2013 to ensure the state's... I'm sorry. Councilmember Radner is coming back in right now. It was created in 2013 to ensure the state's public defense system is fair, cost-effective, and constitutional. Each local system, so that is ourselves on behalf of the 45th District Court, is asked to create a plan to ensure compliance with these standards with costs for compliance borne by the state. As part of our plan, in order to ensure our system is in compliance with standard one, which is education and training of defense counsel, we have entered into an interlocal agreement with Oakland County to participate in their CLE, or their Continued Legal Education Program, which is administered by the Oakland County Bar Association, ensuring that our criminal defense attorneys are meeting their continuing legal education requirements. So you guys had approved this agreement almost a year ago exactly, January, I think, of 2020. Oakland County recently proposed an amendment to Section 2.2 of the agreement. It effectively places an automatic renewal of the agreement for December 31st of each calendar year unless terminated by either party pursuant to the agreement. City Attorney Duff has reviewed this amendment before we put it onto the agenda, and we're requesting tonight that City Council approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Oak Park regarding MIDC, Continuing Legal Education Requirements.
So we would like a motion approving this amendment.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Edgar, and who is the second?
Burns.
Burns, thank you. Discussion or questions? It's important that these people are trained, and we're delighted that the state will be paying for the cost of the training. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes, motion carried, thank you.
Okay, Director Steve Cooper, he's back from his training, thank you, sir. 14B, please.
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor McClellan, Mayor Pro Tim Burns, and us council members. Before you, I have an interlocal agreement for Clemis IT Services with the Oakland County, and it's a renewal. Attached is a copy of an interlocal agreement for Clemis IT Services with Oakland County. The acronym Clemis stands for Court and Law Enforcement Management Information System. Clemis is multifaceted, regional public safety information management system operated and maintained by Oakland County Department of Information Technology. Clemis is comprised of many software applications. The purpose of Clemis is to provide innovative technology and related services to criminal justice slash public safety agencies to enable them to share data and improve the delivery of criminal justice slash public safety services. The Oak Park Public Safety Department currently uses Clemis for prisoner processing, which includes our fingerprinting, booking, our mug shots. We also use it for our report writing, for police and our fire reports, our in-car computers, our online crash reports, our e-citations, our daily log sheets, our evidence and property system. The system is also used to access incident reports throughout the various agency in multiple counties, to include Oakland, McComb, Wayne, Genesee, and there are other counties that use this system as well. Various components of the system is also used by other departments within the city. The Oak Park Department of Public Safety has used Clemis for over 25 years. This tool is invaluable and an absolute must for public safety. As far as the financial obligations, the only costs associated with the interlocal agreement are normal, normal user fees for various application and software. And I'm coming to City Council requesting that you approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to sign the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Oak Park.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Sandra Crawford, 14C, please.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and council members. Item 15C is the second quarterly investment report for fiscal year 2021. And the second quarter investment report shows that the city has a total of cash and investments totaling 33,000, excuse me, $33,659,956, which is the market value, which includes the cash and operating account of $1,234,717, which is excluding any outstanding checks and other adjustments. Our short-term investments in the Oakland County investment pool is about $30,131,354, and we have long-term investments that totaled $2,293,885. The city has continued to maximize investment returns on short returns by utilizing the Oakland County investment pool and minimizing the amount that's maintained in our daily checking account. Our investment income for the months of October through December 2020 totaled $78,656. This is slightly down from last year around this quarter, which, if you recall, that's when the markets were starting to decline, and we had totaled then $89,506 in investment income. The second quarter overall investment returns are still at the same low levels that they were in the first quarter. As the economists predicted, the return is approximately 0.90%. The federal, you know, Reserve sets this rates nearly at 0%. So as a result, what the city is doing is investing in short-term rates and locking up longer-term investments if they are favorable. The interest rates for next quarter are expected to remain low, and all overall investments will continue to fall as long-term investments continue to mature. But these are the cash holdings and investments as of December 31st for the City of Oak Park.
Right, thank you. City Clerk Norris, we just accept and file?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. 14D, please, Director Crawford.
Yes. 14D is the second quarter budget to actual report as of December 31st, 2020, and I am reporting on the general fund. And the revenues for the general fund at the end of December 31st, 2020, were approximately 84% of the annual budget. And the reason is, is because most of our taxes that we collect by August 31st, which is in the first quarter, which means that 94% of the tax, tax bills have been paid, and that any unreal property taxes that have not been paid will be purchased by Oakland County to us in May of 2021. Also, our intergovernmental revenue state sharing, we receive our, we receive, the city receives six bi-monthly payments, and so far, the second quarter reflects the two payments that we received for fiscal year 2021, which totaled $1,344,770. And that includes the August 31st payment of 2020, which is included in part of the June 20 revenues. The city will, will receive the remaining payments on February 28th, on April 30th, and June 30th, and August 31st related to this fiscal year. The estimated annual revenue included in the budget totals about $3,570,123. Our fines and forfeitures revenue received from the 45th District Court is budgeted for about $1.7 million, which is $645,441, or 38% of what we have received in the second quarter. Overall, the court revenue continues to be less than prior years and less than budgeted due to COVID, and it reduces the number, and it's due, excuse me, it's due to reduced number of drivers on the road and tickets written. The court has done a good job, though, in reducing their cost to offset some of the lost in revenue. Finance will continue to monitor both the court revenue and the expenditure budgets and amend as necessary. Our federal grants we received is higher than originally anticipated, as the city has received the federal CARES funds passed through the state of Michigan and Oakland County related to the COVID-19 pandemic. These revenues will be used to offset both unbudgeted expenditures that incurred since March of 2020, along with reimbursements for some of the allowable budgeted costs, which will also be used to offset some of our revenue loss. Finance will bring forward, and I believe the next amendment, the next item 14E, the budget amendments for both revenue and any unbudgeted expenditures. Our recreation program fees lag behind prior and the current year are reduced due to the pandemic and the related shutdown. Program fees are currently approximately 35% of the budget and have historically been closer to the 50% through the second quarter. Some of the revenue loss have been offset by cost savings, and budget amendments will be forthcoming in the next amendment to reflect those most recent projects. Our expenditures for the second quarter are approximately $9.4 million, which represents about 43% of our annual budget. And some of the ones that are notably over the 50% mark are the Human Resources Department, which, as you recall, last time when I brought forth the first quarter, it was due to a retirement for the Human Resources Director at that time due to the defined, her payouts of the time banks that she had. And then also, we had an increase in the defined contribution retirement for the newly hired Human Resources Director. Our prosecuting attorneys are about 58% of their budget, and that's again due to the timing of when the payment is made. And then our elections are at about 73% of their budget due to the timing of when the elections take place, to which the presidential primary was during the first quarter, and the general election was in the second, second quarter, resulting in the majority of their budget being expended. The Special Events Recreation Department is at about 59% of their budget due to the seasonality of the nature of the recreation programs. But overall, the net budget for the department is in line with current projections. The Communications Department is about 50%, 52% of their budget due to all of the capital outlay expense being expensed in this second quarter. But overall, the general fund operations are in line with the annual budget. However, finance will continue to monitor these revenues and expenditures and bring forth budget amendments that are necessary. And that's it for that report.
That's just to review and accept, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Director Crawford, 14E, please.
14E is the second quarter budget amendments for the fiscal year 2021. The second quarter budget amendment is summarized below, and basically, there are some detailed info, significant items. I will just highlight the main ones. The, we had a reduction in various expenditures for the budget for fiscal year 2021. One was for raises that were issued, that were budgeted for 2021, but they were paid in fiscal year 1920. We did have increase in state shared revenue that was matched most of our recent revenue estimates. And then we had the increase in the federal grants for the amounts received, as I said before, in the Kears County. The federal grants money in the Oakland County Kears... the federal grants money and the Oakland County CARES programs. But notably with that is that the overall reason that the, the, this amendment will produce a projected increase to our fund balance is due to the one-time grants from the state for COVID-nineteen revenue replacement. We anticipate that some additional and possible revenue may drop before the end of the fiscal year due to the COVID-nineteen, which may impact the ultimate fund balance. But as we stand now, we are projecting to add one point three million to our fund balance for this fiscal year. But as I said, in case we have a drop in revenue or things like that, that amount may change. Also, there are authorities, and the authorities in special revenue funds, the street funds at fifty-one revenue was increased to match from the state estimates. And then there had been a reduction of various expenditures that was budgeted for fiscal year 2021. Also, for our capital-related, our capital projects fund, budget and related transfers were recorded for the decorative fence project, M six fifty-nine. And then for the enterprise fund, which is our water and sewer fund, reductions of various expenditures for the fiscal year 2021. And also, revenue and expenditure line items were adjusted to reflect the actual activity to date. So what I'm asking is that the proposed budget amendment, that it has an impact on the fund balance of the general fund while keeping the estimates of the fund balance at approximately twenty-one percent of annual expenditures. The amendments to all other funds keep the fund balance at targeted ranges and are done in compliance with the state of Michigan requirements and guidelines. And I'm seeking approval for the resolution to authorize these budget amendments.
Thank you, Director Crawford. Councilmembers, before I turn it over to you, I just wanted to add something. Normally, I'd see a one point three million dollar increase to our general fund balance, and I'd be overly excited and, and optimistic and think it's great. But as Director Crawford mentioned, I mean, obviously, the other shoe's got to drop here in this whole situation. So those funds are going to go out the doors sooner than I think we realize and when we fully account for the, the reductions from the pandemic. But the good news is we're reducing expenditures as much as we can in preparation, all the while receiving these reimbursements, of course, and, and preparing ourselves and not reducing the general fund balance from what it was pre-pandemic levels.
Good, good financial planning. Can you use a vote then?
Yes, this takes a vote.
This is a resolution approving the requested budget amendment, twenty twenty-one dash three for period ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty.
It's a, take a roll call vote, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Will someone make the motion?
Still moved.
That's, Mayor Pro Tem Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Radner, any discussion or questions? I have just one. I wanted to add three thousand dollars to the recycling commission budget. They have expenses but no assets. Do you want to do that the next time or?
Are you asking me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, if you're asking me, just my opinion and my preference would be to add that as part of our new budget. You know, we're, we're going to be coming to you in April with a new budget, so we're just, so.
I'm happy doing that. Thank you so very much. We have a motion at a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, Director Crawford, it's turned out to be quite a night for you here. How about fourteen F, please?
Thank you. Before you, city council members and Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor, are, I'm asking for the approval of the Board of Review compensation and additional meeting dates. And based on our charter, our charter states that our Board of Review shall meet on the second and fourth Monday in March for the purpose of hearing tax assessment appeals. The assessing, the assessing department is requesting to schedule one additional date with the option to add additional dates if needed. There, it's recommended that City Council approve the rate of compensation for the Board of Review at a hundred and twenty dollars for a full-day session and sixty dollars for a half-day session service. It is also recommended that City Council approves the holding of the twenty twenty-one Board of Review meetings at City Hall the following dates and times. And they are Monday, March eighth, twenty twenty-one, nine AM to one PM, and then again, three PM to seven PM. On Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, from six PM to eight PM. And then on Monday, March twenty-second, two thousand, twenty twenty-one, nine AM to one PM and two PM to four PM. And we will be practicing safe socially distance because the appointments are, they're by appointment only. And so we can secure that for those who want to come in person to appeal their property taxes or to provide a poverty or request a poverty exemption. We can have those safe socially distanced meetings, or they can also by telephone, we're available. We do not recommend holding Zoom due to the nature of their financial information that is provided at the poverty, if someone is applying for a poverty exemption. We just cannot guarantee the safety of that information not being, you know, attacked or whatever. And, and, and as you, some of you may know, even when we have our retirement board meetings, our investment advisors don't show or display our financial information on the Zooms as well either as just to provide another level of security for those members with that financial information being displayed.
Thank you. So we need a motion to adopt the rate of compensation for the Board of Review members and the twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. There are most, a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar, discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourteen G, we have our city assessor, Aaron Powers, here, but Director Crawford, did you want to introduce him or say anything first?
I will introduce him. Some of you may know, if not, Aaron Powers is, is our city assessor, which is through the WCA Assessing Company. And he's been with us for, oh, it's been about five or six years now at least. So without further ado, Aaron, if you would like to chime in and present item fourteen G with respect to the poverty exemption policy and guidelines that you're asking that council approved?
Thank you, Sandra. Certainly will. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The matter that you have before you this evening is a consideration to approve the poverty exemption policy and guidelines for the City of Oak Park. The City of Oak Park, like all Michigan municipalities, administers the poverty exemption that is established by the state of Michigan for those individuals who meet certain particular criteria, which would allow them for a partial reduction in taxes. In a nutshell, individuals who both meet an asset test as well as an income test are eligible for a particular reduction in regards to their property taxes. It's a state law. And Oak Park administers our policy in the same fashion that every other municipality does as well. In December of 2020, the governor signed some new legislation. It was Public Act two fifty-three, I believe, of 2020, which altered the legislation concerning this poverty exemption, and we had to make some changes to accompany that. The new legislation essentially changed the method in which we actually calculate the reduction in taxable value as where it was before. We could take different items into consideration, and the new law essentially eliminates that. So we've provided a recommended policy that is very in step with the policy that was in existence previously with the City of Oak Park. To put it in a perspective, there's only about twenty applicants per year that this policy and, and specific exemption pertains to. But the policy that we have before you for consideration this evening would establish the income test, the asset test, and the calculations that would be allowed under the Public Act two fifty-three of 2020 for the ultimate reduction in taxable value.
And this is to meet the state, the new state law?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. This new policy, our previous policy would not be allowed under the new legislation any longer. And this new policy and guideline and application would put us in adherence with the new state law. We have to use other application, for example, as well as the specific amount of calculation of reduction in taxable value has to be a particular amount that's established newly by this legislation. So free recommendation this evening is to accept the poverty exemption policy and guidelines, which is inclusive of the application before you.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the City of Oak Park twenty twenty-one poverty exemption policy?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Second? Come on, people.
Give me any second.
I think that was Councilman Whitehead.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. It's hard when everybody's on a screen to see who, who said it. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Councilwoman Julie, you can go first.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Well, I just wondered, so we have to conform to the new public act, correct? I mean, this is not something we can vote against.
Well, what, this is a recommended policy that is the most in common with the public act. So what we had before was the methodology which we utilized to calculate the reduction in taxable value took into an account numerous items. And then our calculation would be a reduction in taxable value based on those items. The new legislation essentially indicates that we can either fully exempt an individual, provide them with a twenty-five percent reduction or a fifty percent reduction. So our mathematical computation doesn't work any longer. We have reviewed what our previous reductions equated to over the last five years, and our previous reductions were about fifty percent. So that's the recommendation that we have for your consideration this evening. The policy that we're putting forth is the, it most mimics the previous policy that was in existence prior to the public act.
So what kind of real-world impact will this have on our city and our ability to collect property taxes? It sounds like it's really, will pretty much stay the same.
I would assume so. Yes, that's correct. As I indicated, there's only been about twenty applicants on a yearly basis that apply for this. An applicant has to, for example, have very few assets and meet the federal poverty guidelines. So we don't typically have a lot of applicants as it relates to this. And I, I have not seen a significant impact in regards to revenue from general property tax because of this. It's a state law that we have to follow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you ready to vote?
Is that a question? It's a comment?
Yes.
Aaron Powers, you were the one who did that great work for us on Crown Point, right? With, do with Crown Point, the Crown Point case?
Yep.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you again. All right, that's all I wanted to mention. I remember you from the Crown Point situation.
Madam Mayor, I did have a question if that was okay.
Yes, Councilmember Whitehead, thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned that it was twenty applicants on average per year. Do we know if that number has, is going to increase given the pandemic from last year or, or continuing into this year or?
Too early to tell, Councilman. We're going to be sending out our assessment change notices here. I anticipate having them in the mail by the nineteenth in just a few days. And then an applicant has the opportunity to appeal to either the March, July, or the December board if they're seeking a hardship or a poverty exemption. Whether or not we'll have additional applicants this year or not. It's on, it's kind of early to tell. We haven't seen or heard of it elsewhere as of yet, but I'm not anticipating a significant increase.
Okay. And just to follow up, did last year increase or was it around the average as well, twenty, twenty nineteen, I guess, or twenty twenty?
It was the same, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. We had not had a significant increase in applications for the poverty, at least in the last four to five years that we reviewed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You were, we know, poverty. So are we then ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron, so much. Fourteen H, Director Davis?
Thank you, City Manager Tom Gate. And good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, my good colleagues. I'm going to do the community announcements today by first announcing that Forgotten Harvest still meets in the parking lot on Wednesdays, the recreation parking lot to distribute a food pantry. They've been doing that for us since last year, and they're one of the greatest community partners we could ever ask for. They still do that. However, because the weather is, has been so inclement lately with the snowfall, it's very possible that they may not be in the parking lot this Wednesday. So what I'd urge everyone to do is to check Facebook on the morning of for an announcement to see whether or not they'll actually be there before you venture out, since we're going to have such bad weather. But just know that right now, there's no end date to our partnership with Forgotten Harvest. They've been doing a great thing for our community. If you have questions, you can also always call the recreation office. They usually will know if you can't get to Facebook, and that number is two four eight, six nine one, seven five five five. We had our first Ask the Attorney event at the Oak Park Library on the third of February, and it was really a great, great event. Our own council member, Sean Whitehead, was the special guest that day, and we want to thank you for that. We have our second one coming up on March the third, and that one is with Al Elvin. Al Elvin is a, is a board member with the library, and he is also on the Oak Park School Board. He's an attorney, and I've known him for many years. He also served for many years as a reporter with the Oakland Press, and he's just a really fantastic person. So that's March the third. In order to be a part of that event, you need to call the library and register ahead of time at two four eight, six nine one, seven four eight zero. That is the number for the library. Also, Black History Month program is going on right now for the library. They're doing the, the special history moments on Facebook right now. And they're really terrific. I actually played a couple of them myself. And we're going to move down to recreation. I do want to talk about this. Recreation has some wonderful things going on, and a lot of them are virtual. But some of them are in person, but done very safely, where there's perhaps bingo from the car, that sort of thing. However, driving bingo is also going to be affected by any inclement weather. So what you should do is always, before you come out to an event, check Facebook or call the recreation department on the day of the event to find out if there are possible cancellations due to harsh weather. So make sure you do that. And there is a virtual pet contest going on right now. I don't want anyone to miss. It started today. It's a one-day deal, and it's where you go to the recreation Facebook page and you look for the post about pets. And you post a picture of your favorite fur baby, and people will go on that page and hit the like button. And the one with the most likes will win a prize, and they'll be notified about it on the seventeenth. So please go and saw some cutie pies. And there's little puppies, dogs. I saw a bunny. Saw all kinds of things. So please do either participate or vote. We have a virtual trivia night that is continuing, which is pretty well attended. We have two coming up. On February the eighteenth, we'll do Twilight, the movie. That'll be the virtual trivia night. It's for, and then a family night, which is a Harry Potter night, trivia night. That's on February twenty-fifth. The one on the eighteenth for Twilight starts at seven. The one for Harry Potter on February twenty-fifth starts at six thirty. And please don't hesitate to call the recreation department to find out more about that at two four eight, six nine one, seven five five five. We have fantasy basketball and adult NBA two K twenty-one leagues. Both of them are adult. And they're both starting, one is fantasy basketball is in week two. And adult NBA two K twenty-one leagues is a four-week program, starts today. But I believe you can still call in and be a part of that. Adult Madden NFL, NFL twenty-one league as well, so all free for adults. Then for our seniors, let me talk about that. We have drive-in bingo. That seems to be really well attended, and our seniors are loving it. That's where you're driving into the parking lot, receiving your bingo card, and with your windows up, you're listening to the game through the radio, and you can actually play in the comfort of your own car. The next one is February the twenty-second at eleven thirty in the morning for one hour. It's free, and it's in the recreation parking lot. Train Your Brain, Brain Booster Activity Packs are still being passed out. Call and reserve those through March. Call and reserve those through March the 10th. You'll be able to get them through March the 10th. This is a wonderful program sponsored by Humana. A bunch of activities for you to do weekly that'll help keep your brain active and keep you thinking. There's also, as a matter of fact, I think Mayor McClellan, you actually did speak about that. Did you get one of those activity packets?
I did, and they were wonderful, and I posted on Facebook that I had to snatch the puzzle book when Keith was taking a nap to get a try.
I'm glad it was really helpful. I'm glad it was fun.
We were having some fun with that.
That's good. That's good. There is also a Matter of Balance workshop. This is sponsored by the National Kidney Foundation. That's coming up pretty soon, and I'd like, if you're interested in that, please give a call over to the recreation department. That one, and also the Diabetes: A Personal Path Toward Health Prevention Program. They're both free. Diabetes programs presented by Beaumont and the National Kidney Foundation presents Matter of Balance workshops. Please call the recreation department for information on those, again, at 248-691-7555. This is also a reminder that our Smart Bus is doing all kinds of wonderful things for our seniors and those with disabilities who need some help getting around. We're not just talking to the grocery store, but we can also do appointments, like doctor's appointments, the drugstore to pick up prescriptions, and any kind of shopping. All you have to do is give a call over to the office and let them know what you need, and they'll arrange it. Our relationship with Smart Bus is just magnificent, and they've really been helpful to us. We're also urging our seniors to call the senior services in our recreation department to sign up for reassurance calls and check-ins from Mary Lee. She's our senior services coordinator, and she will do check-ins every now and again, just to see how you are. So call us and give us your best phone number that we can use there. And for our youth, the teen council is still happening. That happens on the last Monday of the month. It is virtual at this point using Zoom. And the next meeting is on February 22nd at 4:00 p.m. We're urging all of our teens to get involved because it's run by the youth. It's their ideas that we implement there. We have a virtual arts and crafts program for ages 6 to 12. It's intro to painting, and that costs $10, and it is February 23rd at 5:00 o'clock. You do have to pick up your supplies from the recreation department. After that, it's a virtual event. And for youth, we also have those sports events. We have a Rocket League solos for ages 10 to 17. That's $10 for eight weeks and the playoffs there starting today. Also, Youth NBA 2K21 League and a Youth Madden NFL 21 League, both of those for ages 13 to 17. There's a small cost of $20 for those. They're both four weeks, plus the playoffs, and they all began today, but it's not too late. Give a call if you're interested at 248-691-7555. And then finally, just a couple of reminders. One is, our city manager Tungate mentioned that our complex is still closed, and it is for the health and safety of everyone involved, our staff and our residents. But remember that you can still do business with the city of Oak Park. We have a Dropbox outside of the building for any bill payments that you'd like to make, and that is checked multiple times a day. We do it every day. And just a reminder, we are always at work. We've been at work since the pandemic struck and since we had to close the building. Some of us are able to work from home, and we're here, and some of us have had to brave the elements there and work in the building. But we are always here to service our residents and take care of the business. So if you need to reach us, please look on the website, look up our email addresses and our phone numbers, because we are answering or returning calls, and we are answering emails because we are all still working really hard for you. Wanted to remind you of that. And the city manager also called for a snow emergency tomorrow. This is the last announcement. When that happens, of course, that's because four inches or more of snow is expected to fall, and we need to make sure we can get our emergency vehicles down the street and that our public works department can plow the streets. So we ask that all cars are removed from the streets. There is a public parking map if you don't have a place in your driveway for your car. So please go to the website, to the Department of Public Works page, and look for Snow Removal, and you'll see that under Snow Removal or Snow Emergencies, I'm sorry, you'll find that there's a map there, a snow emergency parking map. We will be announcing those kinds of closures, and we have. You should have gotten an e-blast for those who are signed up. Also, it's been on Facebook on all pages, and it's on the website. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give a call if it's something about the streets sweeping and all that. Look for our posts on Facebook about that, but if you have questions, you can always call City Hall, and we'll be happy to take your questions. And that is all for me tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Davis. Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Please stay safe out there, everybody.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate. Now it's called to the audience. If you have three minutes to speak to us about any topic related to the city.
Anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand in the participant list or leave a comment in the chat, and we will call on you. Give it just a couple of moments here. No, Mayor, I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Okay. Then we will go to call to the council. I have three items. One is the snow emergency tomorrow morning, Tuesday, 10:00 in the morning till Wednesday at 10:00 in the morning. Please take your cars off the streets. DPW can then clean the streets, and the emergency vehicles can get through. We don't want to give any tickets at all. It's expensive and it's a pain, so please remind your neighbors to move their cars. We have our new restaurant, Oak Park Social, open on 11 Mile Road. Give them a warm Oak Park welcome by calling in an order. Our local restaurants are the heart of our community, and Keith and I tried it, and it was a two thumbs up. We also have a Kitchen Angel in Oak Park, and you might have seen her on television or seen her in the newspaper. The WXYZ headline said, "Oak Park Woman Creates Community by Giving Away Free Loaves of Bread." So her husband had been sick. She's working full-time. But Marilyn Mack Pilchowski, when I can't sleep at night, I read a book. She gets up and makes sourdough bread. And as you can imagine, she wound up with more bread than she can use, so she started giving them away. And then somebody wanted to order one, so she thought she'd take an order because it'll pay for her flour. And now she started a program, Sell One, Give One. So if you buy a loaf from her, she will give one away to someone who needs a loaf of bread. She's up to 15 loaves a week. You have to be pretty patient. We called, and we're picking up our bread on Friday and paying for one to be donated. She is, her dream is to open a community bread oven where people can learn to make bread. And the name of her business is Sweet Bird Kitchen. Sweet Bird Kitchen? Look her up on Facebook, order a bread, and support this kind woman. Thank you. Mayor Protem Burns, is there anything you would like to say besides keep warm?
Yeah, stay safe. If you don't have to go out of the house, don't. And just keep praying.
Amen. And we will all be praying for teaching. Councilmember Edgar?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for showing up, so I also want to echo Mayor Protem Burns in saying, please stay safe. If you are out there and you have equipment and you feel like doing somebody else's driveway or sidewalk, that'd be great. I noticed a lot of that today walking, that people who have a snow blower just went up and down the block. It's a really nice thing to do. And I think we're going to have a lot of snow, so whatever help you can give would be great. I would say that these businesses that we've been talking about, this one, this woman who's sort of a fledgling business owner, it'd be wonderful to have some sort of business incubator in Oak Park. I think it's something our economic development staff might want to work on. You know, let's find a bank willing to fund these kinds of ventures, because that is going to build our city. That will really be the foundation. And then thirdly, on a darker note, I just want to say to all you gun owners out there, please lock up your guns, take out the ammunition, keep them away from children. And thank you for coming. Good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Radnor?
Happy President's Day. Good night.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to say that we had some great applicants tonight for the special meeting that we had. Really appreciate everyone's enthusiasm towards the city and looking forward to working with everyone. I really do want to mention the Summer Blast that was mentioned last meeting, and I really appreciate how everybody has kind of supported my idea of Juneteenth, being a part of Summer Blast. So I'll be going to speak, thanks to Councilwoman Edgar during some of her time at the Parks and Recs meeting this week about possibly doing Juneteenth for Summer Blast. So I just appreciate everybody's support in regards to that. And then the last thing, just kind of piggyback off of what Director Davis talked about earlier in her report with the Ask an Attorney. The first official one went really, really well. I was able to provide four 30-minute consultations for free. So hopefully that helps those individuals, and hopefully we can keep doing this each month, and hopefully within the next couple of months, I'll have Councilman Solomon on there with me, so.
I wondered when you were going to come into that. Thank you. Thank you so much. And there being no further business to come before council, this meeting is adjourned. Please stay safe, don't over shovel, and stay warm. It is freezing. Thank you and good night.